Call to order of the College School District Board of Education meeting, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call please.
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Yeah?
Here. We have a quorum. Next is to amend the agenda.
Move to amend the agenda to move item three A approval of agreement with agmentium to action items.
Second.
All in favor?
And move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. We had no public comment tonight, so next we have the school spotlight. We have Dogwood Elementary, Ms. Gonzalez.
Good evening. Dogwood's schools, before Dogwood's school spotlight, we wanted to share something that has become very special at Dogwood this year. We had something new. Coach and Ms. Abersold approached me last year with an idea for togetherness within our community, and it actually quickly filled a need that we discovered after reviewing some panorama data and student input. So I'm gonna pass the mic over to Coach and Ms. Abersold and let them explain our huddle up time at Dogwood.
So our huddle up groups are a mixture of our kindergarten through fifth grade kids, and we basically put them in a big spreadsheet, and we took about thirty staff members to where we took two to three kids from each grade level and built each roster that we gave out to each staff member. So each staff member has about thirteen to fourteen kids with kindergarten through fifth graders all together to kind of create a sense of community outside of their own classroom. And it's been fantastic because you have kindergartners mixed in with fifth graders to learn that fifth graders aren't so big and scary, and then you have ways to find kids mingling throughout the day, and they notice other people in the hallway, and they're able to find familiar faces, and also they are building relationships with teachers that they might not ever have in the classroom, they might not know, they might not ever see, and so it's another potential trusted adult that they could find in the building that they could spend time with. Our goal with huddle up also to not only build that community and build friendships outside of their own grade level is that we want to keep the huddle up groups each and every year the same. So as we graduate our fifth graders, the fourth graders will move up, and your huddle up group stays the same, and then you will adopt new kindergartners that come in. So then you are building those relationships with kids throughout your six years at Dogwood. It's been fantastic, and I want to give a shout out to all of our teachers because we came at them with something that's brand new, and we really give them the freedom to do whatever they want, which can be scary for some. They want, you know, a plan of what to do, and they've kind of just come up with relationship building things and community ideas that they do with their group once a month, and it's been fantastic, and I'll pass the mic to Kami, and she'll explain a little bit more.
So as Coach mentioned, the why of starting it was to form community, but how it came up was at a care meeting last spring when we broke into groups. A former Dogwood student was actually in my group and kept talking about just wanting a sense of belonging. And then when we got our panorama results back in our upper grades, we had a high percentage of kids indicate that they did not feel a connection or a sense of belonging at school. And so we used that information to come up with the idea and just went from there. I will share one story of how we've seen at work. At Car Rider one day, this kindergartner kept screaming this fifth grader's name, and I was like, "How do you know him? Do you guys ride the bus together?" And he was like, "No." And I was like, "Well, you aren't neighborhood friends," and he was like, "He is in my huddle up group." So we've seen a big difference and relationships form among the kids, and so now the kids will get to share. Does this come out to pass?
Hi, my name is Adrian, and I'm gonna tell you about huddle up. Huddle up is being like able to be a role model to other kids and getting to know people you don't know.
Hi, my name is Abigail Araho, and usually during huddle up, we'll talk about our plans of the day, or we'll make a craft.
Hi, my name is Hallie, and huddle up is important to me because we get to come together and get to know each other.
My name is Veda, and during huddle up, we often do fun activities. My teacher lets us tell her if we have any good ideas for the next huddle up. I have already made new friends.
Hi, my name is Brennan. I love huddle up because we get to play games and do crafts and meet new people.
Hi, my name is Johnny, and huddle up is important to me because I, it helps me get to know other people in different grade levels, and when I walk in the hallway, you have someone to say hi to.
Hi, my name is Carson. If I could share anything about huddle up, it would be that other people care for people and that we play and do fun crafts. Do you guys have any questions?
Since doing it once a month, when do you do it during the day then? When do you do it?
Like around eight forty.
Around eight forty.
More questions?
Well, we thank you for your time and hearing about our huddle up. Like the teachers said and the kiddos, it's been a huge success. I wanted to tell a little quick story about Ms. Bayhan has a group, so every adult in our building has a group. Our paras support students of need, and then I wander and I help. If a staff member is absent or missing, I can easily pop in and host that huddle up, which has been a lot of fun for me. But we had a kiddo come down to the office not too long ago and said, "Ms. Bayhan, Ms. Bayhan, your meeting is in the fourth grade pod." And she's like, "I don't, I don't have a meeting in the fourth grade pod. There's nothing scheduled." And they're like, "Yeah, you have a meeting right now." So we were both kind of confused what's happening, and so Ms. Bayhan, you know, walks down there wondering what's going on, and it was some students waiting for her, for her huddle up group, but it wasn't even huddle up day. It was little ones, but they were like, "It's huddle up time," and they had had substitutes, so that's why they kind of worked the system there. But our kiddos are loving it, and they want more time. So it's been a really great come together for Dogwood to watch these kiddos. That's some of the pictures. You have your fifth graders that go get the little ones to take them to a new classroom because they haven't explored the entirety of our building. So it's been really sweet to see that interaction, so thank you.
Thank you all very much. We're gonna do a picture up here in front, so. Okay, so parents and kids, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, and we've got lots of big kids coming in, so. You are also welcome to leave if you don't want to stay. Okay, next we have the golden girls. Okay, we're gonna swap out kids. I think they can come in this way, John.
I love her.
Who's that?
Her grandma's little girl.
Oh.
Everybody here?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Coach.
All right, well, hi, nice to meet all of you guys. I'm Victoria Scanlon, I'm the new head coach. These girls had a fantastic year. We got to cheer on our football boys at state amongst hours and hours of practice, and then we went to three separate competitions this year, so our, our season's not just one game or one competition. So we started the season off at KC Classic, winning first in both of our routines, so we compete two routines every time, in our jazz and our palm. Then about a month later, we competed in Harley Summit North Regional Competition, where we took first in our jazz routine, third in our palm routine, and then about a month after that, we competed in our state competition, where we took first in palm, second in jazz, with a combined score that took us into first overall Division III for the third time, third year in a row. And then we also had several individual state champions, so some of these girls also competed individual solos, most against thirty-plus other dancers in the state of Missouri. Our freshman soloist, Ainsley, placed first wherever she's at, and then our junior soloist also placed first, so Ari. I think Ari had the most, there was seventy-four junior soloists, so she got first out of all of those, which was fantastic. And then we had a couple of our other soloists, all of our soloists actually placed in the top fifty percent, so they all did fantastic, but yeah. Sure, yeah.
Give me help.
Avery Eller. Grace Daly. Ainsley Daniels. Sophia Frank. Emery Glennon. Mia Grisham. J.C. Hensley. Lily Cogarice. Annalee Miles. Ricky O'Connor. Taylor Ross. Cameron Slaughter. Kennedy Slaughter. Aubrey Taylor. Ari Watkins. Claire Watson.
Sorry. All here. No, they're all here, that's correct. That's fantastic.
Three-time state champions, right?
Hi Claire. How are you?
This girl's wrestling right? Yeah, I'm good.
Are you on the team?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Actually, not now.
Right? Exactly. Hello?
I think we got room.
Yeah, I think so.
We don't want to listen to Jake Hill talk. There you go, right?
Coach Ward, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Thanks for having us. You want me to go ahead and get started, or you want to wait?
Well.
It's gonna be a big interruption.
Yeah. They might want to cheer on their other.
Yeah, there he is, right there.
Refresh your screens. Refresh your screen.
Yes ma'am.
Welcome, Coach Ward.
Good to go?
Yes, we're good to go.
All right. All right, so thanks for having us. I'm here to talk about the girls' wrestling team. We went and won state again. So last year, when I came and talked to you guys, I, I kind of, you know, talked about how remarkable it was that four girls went and won a state title and how the margin of error was really slim, and we somehow did that again, and it was really even more uphill battle this year because we took fourth at districts, and three of the teams, actually in the top four at the state tournament, were from our district, and so the team that won our district, Odessa, had eight state qualifiers, and so we only had four. They ran away with the district tournament, and we kind of were like, "Oh, ouch, that's not what we had in store." And so went back and looked at things, and, and Vargas's mom, Carly's mom kind of cracks up because I have spreadsheets just for days. I start, we call it monkeying when we look through all the brackets and, and all the different, you know, data from the season, and so I was like, ah, she's like, "What do your spreadsheets say?" And I said, "I think we can still do it." And so did some math, and I told the girls, like, you know, "We're gonna have to do the work of eight, you know, six, seven, eight girls with, with four of you," and in wrestling, you know, wins are kind of, point totals are differentiated by the degree of how bad you win, right, or how, how big the margin of victory is, and so they call those bonus victories. I told them, "Hey, we gotta pin everybody," and I said, "The math says if we, if we do seven pins, we get seven pins, we'll have, it's like taking an extra state medalist down there with us." And so they got ten pins, and actually, every match we won at the state tournament, out of eleven matches, ten were by pin, and one was by major decision. So they dominated. They dominated everybody, and it was fun, they fed off each other, so they're two-time state champs now, and I should back up. The team we took last year, you know, four girls, two of these girls didn't go last year, so we have a freshman, Carly Vargas, took second. Ella Herndon's a second-year wrestler, went down to the state tournament, loses in the first round to the eventual state champion, nationally ranked girl, goes to the back and is losing in the second, second period, like nine to three, I mean, taking it on the chin for a minute, and she just never is out of it. She's fighting, 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 and she, she gets out, escapes, takes the girl down, pins her, and that just kind of started a momentum snowball, and we take that win back. If she just decisions in that match, we don't win the state tournament. So that pin, you know, we win by one point. So last year, we won by half a point, this year, we win by one, so next year, we're gonna double it up. Get real crazy. But yeah, girls, you want to come up? So real quick, Bailey Martin, so she's a junior for us, she won district wrestler of the year, she's also state champ, she pinned her way through the state tournament and the district tournament. She's a three-time state medalist now, hundred and fifteen wins as a junior. She's wrestling on April nineteenth at the Missouri-Kansas Border Brawl, which is a duel between the, you know, all-star girls from both sides of the state line in Kansas City, so pretty proud of her. Said Carly, as a freshman, she was a state finalist, she bonused her way to the state finals, placed her at the Wonder Woman. What else did you do this year, Carly? She's an academic all-state, academic all-American. Ella, like I said, Ella's a second-year wrestler, she went down to the state tournament, got a bonus victory for us that put us over the top. Riley's now a two-time state medalist as a sophomore, she was a state finalist as well, pinned her way all the way to the state finals. So they're amazing girls, they're super tough, they're building a legacy here, our program's on fire, and, and it's really, we're building it around them, so thanks for having us. You're gonna have to stand up. Yeah, 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 so Ella Herndon. We got Ms. Bailey Martin. We got freshman Carly Vargas. And for Riley Walker. And they're all back next year.
Hey, I'm Jake Hill, I'm the head boys coach here recognizing the boys' state team tonight. Thank you to the board for having us out, and congrats again to the girls for a little back-to-back, or go do it again next year, right? The boys varsity this year was a great mixture of young and old, mostly young. We had two seniors in our lineup, and by the end of the district, or by the end of the, the season, we ended up with eight freshmen starting for us, so future's looking bright for this, this group over here. This team had great chemistry on and off the mat, the old guys kind of took them under the wing right away and said, "Hey, we see the talent here, and we think we can go do something." We had lots of conversations at the beginning of season, last year was, was rough for us between injuries and just missing guys here and there, and we took three to the state tournament last year. Two of those guys are here tonight, and that's all back from last year. So this is, you know, like I said, a fresh group that all kind of came together, and we, you know, we told them from the beginning, "Hey, there is a team trophy in this room." I know that's hard to believe from last year when we only took three guys to state, which was a low for us, and then this year, we tied a program high with eleven. So these guys bought in, they stayed tough, and they, they believed, and it wasn't easy from the beginning. Again, lots of lumps when you're especially some freshmen on varsity for the first time, but even some sophomores and juniors, you know, filling in early on. We finished this year as the class-three district four team champions, and like I said, eleven guys qualified for state, and nine of those guys went down there and won matches, but everyone contributed to what ended up being a fourth-place team trophy. So we had, well, I think we held off Platte County by a point and a half, so it came down to the finals, and we had three finalists finish with two runners-up and a, and a state champ, and that, that championship sealed the, the team trophy, that it didn't matter what Platte County did after that, that we got that team trophy. So Reggie and I, the Platte County coach, were having some fun with that last round. So we had eleven state qualifiers, I'll, I'll call them up individually. One oh-six freshman, Phoenix Shelton, you guys can come up on that. One thirteen freshman, Landon Westfall, finished in sixth place. A junior, Ryder Shelton, was a state runner-up, he's now a three-time finalist and two-time champ. One thirty-two junior, Blaine Turpin, had to work tonight, he's now a two-time state qualifier. One thirty-eight sophomore, Kendall Davis, was state qualifier for us, went down one of the matches. One forty-four freshman, Kale Davis, state qualifier. One fifty-seven freshman, Aiden Ariano, state qualifier. One seventy-five freshman, Carter Temple, was your state champion. One ninety senior, Jacque Gist, was a state runner-up. So he upped that, and he did it with a broken elbow, so not, not too shabby. Two fifteen freshman, J.D. Romero. Two eighty-five senior, Tyler Jarrett.
Next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. You know, I just continue to be amazed at the talent that we have with our students, elementary and secondary, and we've become accustomed to this, seeing this month over month, so pretty impressive work. So last night, Jacque Gist and Avery Eller emceed our annual school board forum. We want to thank the six candidates. Um, we wanna thank, uh, the six candidates who took the time to express their viewpoints, um, and vision for the Kearney School District. If you missed the event, um, and would like to watch the forum on YouTube, there's a link on the district's website under the news feed. Uh, as a reminder, the election is April 2nd. MSBA, uh, last week, um, the district leaders met with Linda Quinley, a consultant from the Missouri School Boards Association. Uh, Linda was a former CFO from Columbia and Kansas City Public Schools. And she has extensive experience in school finance. Um, and she was just an invaluable resource as our team really collectively dove in to refine our budget projections for fiscal year '25 and make salary and rec, uh, benefit recommendations. Internally, we were, have worked diligently, um, to really scale back positions through attrition and reduce budgets to reallocate resources to staff compensation. We'll spend the next few weeks finalizing and planning to be recommendations to the April board meeting. So please look for that. Uh, this month is school board member appreciation month. So annually, we recognize school board members for their service. For those of you who follow our meetings, uh, school board service extends far beyond, uh, what you see here. They're involved in professional learning about the role of governance. Uh, they serve on school committees. They're apprised of district recommendations throughout the month leading up to board meetings, and they actively engage members of our community on a regular basis. It is with our sincere thanks and appreciation to you and to your families uh, for volunteering your time for the betterment of our schools and our larger community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving on to... You're under information items. Keep going.
It's, it's down there a little bit.
Yeah, it's a ways. Okay, here we go. Information items. I was looking for action, but they're not there yet. Okay, financials. Ginger.
In your board packet, you'll have the latest financials for February as well as a forecasted projection for the end of the year. Uh, the main thing to note on that is we are projecting currently at 20% in the fund balance, but that is without a fund transfer to four. Did anyone have any questions about the other reports?
Hey Ginger, I do have a couple of questions for you. Um, last night, obviously going to the board forum, you know, I heard a lot of people talking about budget and maybe, um, not having as a deep of understanding as some of us that sit on this board and kinda wanted to go through like a little basics of Fund One, Fund Two, Fund Three, Fund Four. Kind of where, where they land, why we, why we have the four funds and how they pay for themselves. And so I just didn't know if you wouldn't mind speaking to like what were, where our tax dollars come in at, into which funds, and what each fund actually is allocated for.
Ryan, do you wanna pull the fund balance report up, please? This report we present every month is recapping each fund. Uh, the first fund on the list is the general fund, or the operating fund. Within that fund is where the monies come in from local dollars, meaning your property tax money. Out of that fund, we pay for transportation, uh, food service, uh, classified salaries, all the operating costs for our district. The second fund, or the special revenue fund, teachers' fund, is where we pay our certified teachers. Primarily, the revenue going into that comes from our state and our federal funding. Um, let's see, the next one is our debt service, a little bit further down. Um, that is all for our bond repayment. Currently, we have three outstanding bonds that we have to, uh, pay off on a, in March and September, you'll see big hits for those. Uh, the money that comes in from there comes from your tax dollars. That's the separate debt levy that is, uh, collected at the county's. Uh, expenditures, as I said, um, are only for the bond funds. Capital projects funds, that is where your, um, bond monies came in. So when we had the 2022 bond, uh, as well as 17 and 2009, all that money goes into a separate fund that can only be spent on capital projects. And also, one thing that we're able to do to cover other things not covered by the bonds, we can at the end of the year allocate monies from our Fund One to Fund Four to help cover those. Also, you'll notice at the end of the year, for Fund Two, we never have enough money from our local fund, or our state funds, so we have to transfer local monies to that fund to cover the balance.
So we have to transfer money from our general incidental fund to cover and pay for our teachers?
Yes.
I think that's a very important part, you know, of it, is that the general fund is paying our teachers. So our Fund One is our tax dollars. It's our tax rate, our levy rate. And when we pay for our bond or our bond side, our dollar 1901, I might be off on that, but on the bond side, that's to pay for our debt. Any bond money we receive goes into Fund Four. So if we wanna build something, it's coming out of Fund Four. If we want to pay teachers more, it's coming out of Fund One to go into Fund Two. Is that correct?
From our local money.
Okay, great. I just thought that after seeing that last night, I'm reflective and saying...
The money back. Once it's in Fund Four...
You can't move it back.
Can't move it back.
It stays there for, for its life. The only reason I bring that up is that last night, obviously, uh, I mean, we're always learning as board members. And then I think that the more that we talk about, while we're maybe more comfortable with talking about these funds and understanding where the money goes and how the money works and, um, and ways that we're trying to stretch that dollar for our teachers, I think it's good that we maybe have more talks like this so that people that do watch or, or that don't watch, that wanna talk about funding and how the school works, that we have a very strong knowledge, uh, this whole group does, uh, of the budget and that, uh, we should always make sure that people understand that we, we work really hard at that.
Point well taken. Thank you, Ginger.
Thank you, Ginger.
Great job, Ginger.
Bond project update?
Good evening, everybody. So we have, uh, started construction at Southview. Um, the picture, it's kinda hard to see up there. Um, this was on the left kind of a logistics plan that we issued out to parents on how traffic's gonna work during the construction project. Um, so last Saturday, we kinda set up the site, um, set up the fencing. And in the top-right picture, we put a, kind of an overhead protection tunnel at the main entry. So it's got plywood on the ceiling and on the, the one side, cause we'll be building right next to it. So, um, it's 100% safe and, um, no issues with it this week. Um, got everybody in and out safe and so things are, uh, very good there. Just over the next few weeks, um, we've kinda started the grading. Uh, so we've cut all the, the grass out and putting in, putting in the rock under the building pad. We'll start foundations this next week and then masonry walls go up. And kind of our big target is mid-April, we're gonna start setting steel for the addition. So things are moving very well, just like they're supposed to right now. Traffic's been good. We've got good signage up, so everybody knows how to get in and out. And it's, yeah, it's been, it's been good so far. We are, kinda the big goal is to have the roof on the new addition before summer starts. So then, it's just an interior project over the summer. And then the big work on the inside obviously happens as soon as school gets out. Everybody moves out, we move in, and then we're gonna take over the place for a few months. But everything's tracking like it should be and just good news to report.
Thank you, Ben. You have a written program evaluation from special education?
I think we still got Kevin.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's good. Kevin Gresher, DLR Group. Um, I just thought we would give you kind of an update. We've finished Southview. Southview, you just saw, is under construction. We've just finished the schematic design process. We're in the design development process for the next three projects, uh, the other elementaries. And, uh, so I'd kinda give you a, a little bit of rundown of where we're at. So all of these modifications to all of the elementary schools have been about these collaborative areas and creating spaces that, um, all students can use at all grade levels. And, and they're gonna have a very consistent theme. So everything you see in that image right there, um, some new millwork, casework that's for storage of materials and student projects and, and water will be out in, in each one of those collaborative areas. As well as, um, new furniture that's meant to be, we, we sometimes call it hackable. Sometimes, uh, meaning that they'll be able to move it around, do whatever they want to with it. Um, and, and the principals and, and some of the teachers that were on the design team, uh, came up with a lot of what they wanted to see in those spaces. So that's what you see, um, here. So, next slide. So, and, and those areas were all based on what we called the cave, the campfire. You've, you've heard us talk a little bit about that from the last, uh, these archetypal areas just for kids to, to be able to, to, uh, kinda hunker down in those spaces. Next slide. Um, so Dogwood, um, I'll, I'll kinda give you the rundown of what we're doing again and you'll, uh, you'll remember some of the stuff we talked about. But, uh, on Dogwood, we're, we're moving the media center, uh, from its current location and, and putting a, a lot more of the interactive spaces, either counseling or specials, uh, in the, in that center area. We're moving the media center. So it's still centrally located, but it's gonna be on the, on the backside of, uh, of, uh, Dogwood. It'll architecturally look like the existing building. So we're designing it to, to blend in with that. Luckily, we, we did that building, so we, we have all the drawings for that. So... Uh, next slide. So you can see all of that green area, that larger green area right in the center, that's where the old media center has been, was. And the orange is where we're moving it to. Um, we're also extending that entrance on the, um, east side so that, um, it's, it's a little bit closer to the, it'll be, you know, a good stacking area for, for kids, uh, for arrivals and, and pickup. So, uh, I think that'll work great. The yellow areas are those collaborative spaces. Those spaces that, um, we're looking to make sure that, uh, they're very consistent from school to school. There'll also be in each one of those areas, you'll, or three of the four, uh, classroom areas, you're gonna see some, that's a specialist space. It'll be, it might be a resource area that might be traveling resource folks. I don't know how they'll actually use it, but the intention is that each, uh, four classroom pods has got that resource, uh, teacher uh, in there and they're close. So... Um, next slide. And we're not doing anything else other than that. This just gives you a little sense of, of that renovation area, what, what space. Anything that's, doesn't have any color in it or any kind of, um, uh, indication, we're really not doing anything in the buildings, but you can see that, uh, everything else is, is being touched pretty much in the central core of the building. Okay, next slide. And then, uh, Kearney Elementary. Uh, combination of things that are happening here. Uh, Kearney Elementary will be going from a two-section elementary school to a four-section elementary school. So we're adding some, uh, a lot of classrooms here, but we're also bringing the media, media center to the front. On the left side, um, is the, is a media center. So you'll have a kind of a lower area. We're taking over that classroom space on the front. And then that, that higher space is, will be part of that, uh, media center there. And extending out the office, of course, going from a two-section to four-section, we need a few more spaces. And, uh, the intent is to, to make that happen that way. So... And, and getting a, a canopy that's a little bit bigger. It also has moved out there to the north a little while because of the way that we have pickup and drop-off over there where we have, uh, car riders, so we can capture them a little quicker. Um, we will be flattening out that front entry drive just a little bit because we're, we're pushing it out right on the, on that sidewalk. So... Next slide. And ask me any questions, any, anytime. So you can see that we're, where we're adding, um, the classrooms, we're adding them on the backside. Um, we are grabbing a little bit of the, of the, um, playground, if you will, and we'll have to do a little bit of restructuring of that. Uh, keeping, trying to maintain all of the parking that is back there where teachers are parking. Um, and act, and, and we have a, uh, actually have that area where there's a, a new cooling tower there too that we're, we're trying to stay away from and electrical. So we've got, we're, we're doing a little bit of, uh, of, uh, work trying to keep that, um, in, in place. So... Um, and again, um, you can see that, uh, the, the gold area there is, uh, collaborative areas. We're not doing collaborative areas for kindergarten or first grade, but we are for, uh, two through, uh, five. So... Next slide. And you can see the upper levels where those collaborative areas come into play and where those classrooms are. All the blue is, is the classroom areas and some of the green is, is specialists. So... All right, next slide. And, uh, again, this just shows where we're touching, uh, Kearney Elementary. Where we're gonna be doing renovations and where's new. So... And that's just the second floor, upper level. Okay. And then Hawthorne. At, at Hawthorne, uh, we are adding, again, uh, it's, uh, three sections, uh, going to four sections. Um, we are adding four classrooms over here on the, uh, north side. Uh, again, touching, uh, taking a little bit of the space of the playground area there. Um, and, uh, we will have, uh, a full classroom there along with collaborative space. Um, what doesn't show up in this image is right there on where we're adding that where the white part of the roof is and there's a new doorway there. Um, we are extending a corridor that will come from the offices out to that, um, that other pair of doors. So there'll be sort of a vestibule at the kindergarten area. So students and everyone will come into that, to that area. We'll have to modify our, our drive just a little bit. Um, but, uh, I think that will, that, that will make it a lot more convenient for access to the kindergartens. People won't have to go outside, come back in, or go all the way around to get to those. So... And it doesn't show up on here, but same thing. Where the red is in the front, uh, down on the bottom of that plan, um, that's the offices. We're doing a little bit of work in there. We're moving some things around. Uh, one of the things that we originally had intended to try to do is to expand, um, and get the, um, student commons uh, near the kitchen, so we didn't have to do, have the servery where it was at. But, um, there were some logistics that just were too costly to be able to do that. And plus the ceiling heights over there and that old portion of the building. Um, I, I don't know if all of you know, but this is, this, this will be the fifth addition to this building. And so the, the portion of the building... And so the portion of the building that was the original building was almost a pre-manufactured, it was pre-cast panel walls, and they were masonry. I don't know how they did it, but they did. And so we're, so that part on the right, there's been some additions in the back, and then the part on the left, in two cases, so. But trying to make this kind of a cohesive building when we're done and getting those collaborative spaces close to the classroom environment, so.
On the fourth and fifth grade, why didn't you split up the collaboration space?
I think that was really based on a couple of things, but I know we've had some conversations during our design development-
Then you could have a fifth-grade pod and a fourth-grade pod altogether.
Yeah. So I think we've talked a little bit about how we take one of those and make sure that we can put it into the fifth grade. So we have a fifth-grade pod side and a fourth-grade-
Pod in collaboration, yeah, in fourth grade, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't spill over that way.
Yeah.
Just curious.
No, no, that was a, I think it was totally based on, you can see in between those two collaborative spaces, there's a, when it was done, there was a, it was kind of a service or storage space in between them. I think they were thinking that we activate that storage space again and use it for each one of those collabs. But I don't think that it works as well if the classes can't come directly out to that space or they have to walk down the hall, so.
Right.
And they're more together when there's, that's like that, so.
Right.
I think we are moving back to that.
Yeah, it makes more sense.
Yeah. Next slide, I think, just shows the modifications. And next slide. And we're going to take that commons space that's in there right now, try to organize it so that it is a little bit, ceilings are, we're going to try to push the ceilings up in there a little bit and put some acoustical material in there. So if somebody during the day is walking through, it doesn't feel uncomfortable that you're walking through that big commons, so. Next slide, I think that's it. So, any questions in general?
The art room at Hawthorne, is it going to be updated with multiple sinks, flat files, that kind of thing?
We're not doing anything right now with changing the art room.
Captain, I have to add.
Uh-huh.
Worth mentioning, the entryways, standard for the four pools to have an update to our secure entry. For that, with the lighting window for drop-offs and things like that, and then also some protective glass film on one of those layers within the vestibule. As a standard.
Yeah, so they'll all be the same.
And Hawthorne's three-section school, we're going from two to three.
Two to three.
Yeah.
My bad.
I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
Any other questions? Sorry, I almost forgot you. Thank you very much.
That's all right.
Great work.
I'm forgettable.
Looks good.
Looks great.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Okay, now we have program evaluation for special education. It's a written report. Do you have any questions? Then we move on to action items. Food service provider?
Move to approve agreement with Southwest food service excellence as presented.
Second.
Good evening. As you all know, when you, a school district decides to contract out their food service, they're required to put this out for bid every five years. And so we are in our fifth year of our contract. So we put ours out to bid December 1st of this year. And we have, just to give you a brief rundown of what we did, we had a pre-bid, mandatory pre-bid meeting for anybody interested to be here for that meeting on the 15th of December. Our bids were due February 9th, and we had five companies produce proposals for us. We had a seven-member committee that evaluated those five proposals. Actually, there were six for the first one because there was one that was out of town for that, most of that week. And so we evaluated the proposals. And as we said in our RFP, we took that, after our evaluation, down to three companies to bring in for interviews and presentations to our committee. So we did that in late February. And our committee evaluated those three companies. And from that, we came to the conclusion with the recommendation to select SFE for our next five-year contract. They put together a great package for the district, not only the low bid of the five, but some things that they're going to work on adding for us from our current stance with SFE. So tonight, with us is Angie Lyman, our general manager for our district, and Fred Ellis, who is the director of area operations. And I think Fred's going to come up and say a few things.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys taking the time to hear me for just a second. You know, the opportunity that we had to continue the partnership here in the district is very exciting for me. I know it's very exciting for the team. As you know, or as you may not be aware, but we went through COVID. As the first year of our contract, we went right into COVID several months later. And so that really put a dampening on what we were able to do for, not only during that time, but even coming out of COVID and the labor we were dealing with, some of the inflation we were dealing with, it really put a strain on our program. So I was kind of looking forward to getting to this part because this gave us an opportunity to really reset our contract, reset our proposal, add some really innovative things that we wanted to do, not only from a culinary standpoint, but being able to take care of our employees and being able to rework the labor schedule with them and some of the wages with them to really make sure that we can take this next, you know, this new contract and this new five-year contract to the next level. So I'm very excited. You'll see some new team members coming on in the schools. Particularly, a chef's going to be on staff. We're going to have a registered dietitian that's going to be working with Angie and being able to create the menus for the students. You'll see some advisory committees happen directly with the students. So just some really exciting things that we have planned now that we're able to kind of reset that and set it up so we can be successful as we move forward in the partnership with you. So we appreciate it, and thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I actually have a comment, and I mean this in a good way. Just one thing, if you want to get to the hearts of all the kids in the school, Chicken Patty Wednesday. I'm just saying. Chicken Patty Wednesday wins.
And if you knew a spicy version, it's good.
You know? That's Nick, but you know, I'm just saying, Chicken Patty Wednesday, man.
So noted.
You guys do a great job. Thank you so much.
We appreciate it, and we appreciate you feeding us every month, too, as the board. You always come up with something tasty and have some nice themes for us, and so we do appreciate that as well.
That's amazing.
I heard there was something good, but yet I didn't get invited for it.
Wheel? We had a very nice meal tonight, so thank you so much.
Any questions for Fred or myself?
No.
No, but I want to publicly thank you, Eric, for organizing that evaluation process. It was incredibly professional and thorough. Thank you. Susan, thank you for serving on the committee.
Sure.
Okay, next we have approval of the bill of payment.
Vote on that one, sorry.
I'm sorry, we need to vote.
Yes.
All in favor?
Someone's trying to get out of here.
No, no, I really don't have anywhere to go.
Say this next one. Just going to speak a little slower on the next one.
Okay. Next, we have the approval of the bill payment to coal printing.
Move to approve the bill for coal printing as presented.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. And then items, next item is the approval of the agreement with Edmentium.
Move to approve the order in agreement with Edmentium as presented.
Second.
Jennifer, do you want to just give a little background on Edmentum?
Edmentum, it's just, it's a software program that, we used to use it fairly widely in the district, but as we look at our usage across the district, who is using it, who's not, and really, we just have a couple areas at the high school that really do use that. It's our English, too, and our government classes. It's tied, Study Island does a nice job aligning to our state standards. They can pull lessons from there as they want through the year, but Study Island does a great job of writing assessments very similar to the way that the state assessments are written. So that is a great practice for our kids. And it really helps the teachers figure out where the kids are, so.
How many teachers do you, like you say, you said the three classes. Is it four or five teachers? Is it 10, 15 teachers?
We've got, I think it's like 350 licenses, student licenses. So it's, but some of those, the students crossover. So it's our English, two teachers, so that's probably three teachers, probably.
Okay.
And then government, about the same.
Okay. Is there a one-size-fits-all program for all, like with our, with our curriculum? And, or is it, or are we going to always see little programs here, programs there?
Well, when we formed the, I don't say Ellie Stewart, when she formed the 21st Century Skills Team, even before then, we started really going through all of our software, looking at the usage agreements. Ryan helped pull those usage agreements for us so we know what is and what is not being used. Now, I can't say there is a one-size-fits-all because there's so many different needs. You know, one of the other things you guys have approved are, is, it's the reading aids and the math seeds. Well, that's a K-2 program. It's just very specific for those kids. So, no, there's not a one-size-fits-all. There's just a lot of-
Right. And I understand that, because, I mean, they're in our consent agenda every month, and we see all contracts, and we see all these different pieces. Only thing I wanted to, the reason I wanted to talk about it or bring it out was that we do so many of these things, right, Jennifer, that are programs that are beneficial to teachers and to our kiddos, and that sometimes they get passed by versus us talk about them. And so I think it's important that any time we bring a new program to, you know, to the district, it's good for us to chat about, to discuss, to have an open dialogue about that it's the right thing. You know, just because it's what neighbors do or what everybody else does, we need to make sure that we're tailoring it to the Carney kids. And that way, you know, we get the best results.
And I do think we have, in the past three or so years, we're being even more careful with that. We had our 21st Century Skills Team really go through all the different programs. When a teacher, you know, a lot of times, teachers find different things that they're interested in. They'll send something in. We have them tell us why, what is it that they're hoping to get out of this. And we do, you know, we've really moved away from most textbooks. So these are the resources that our teachers are using. So it's hugely beneficial, and we do, we rely a lot on our teachers to let us know what they need.
Fair enough.
Great. Thank you very much. Are we ready to vote on this one? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Any board member comments for tonight?
Chuck and Avery did a great job last night at the forum. Very impressive. It's fun to see the talent that we have in the buildings, you know, to see them, you know, go up there. And that's, that's got to be intimidating at 18, 19 years old to stand in front of 100 people you don't know and moderate and cut people off when they go too long, and-
They were very professional.
They were very professional. They did a great job. I was very proud to be a bulldog last night.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Y'all ready for spring break?
Have two more days.
Dave, you don't get spring break, Dan. Everybody keeps playing anyway, right? That's what I thought. Important dates. Next week is spring break, 25th through the 29th. And then on the tail end of that, April 1st is professional development day, no school. April 2nd is election day. April 10th is our next board meeting, a little earlier than usual because of the election. And April 23rd will be our next board work session. Anything I'm forgetting there? All right. miscellaneous?
Action for a closed session to immediately precede the regular meeting in April, including any vote, or record or vote to discuss items and issues under Section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second. Go call, please.
Lambray.
Yes.
Meredith Cole.
Yes.
John Carr.
Yes.
Rick Spencer.
Yes.
Nick Baskis.
Yes.
Susan Norman.
Yes.
Darlene Bailey.
Yes.
You're adjourned. Thank you all very much.